I'll call to order the October 15th, 2020 pre-meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission. And with us this evening, we've got, I'm Phil Markham, chairman tonight, Travis Nay, Maren Patterson, Zach Smallwood. I would assume Bryant is watching in. Zach will give him credit for being here.
Yeah, he should be for the meeting proper.
And also, we have Ned Hacker from the commission here as well. So with that, we'll take a quick look at our agenda this evening and see if there's anything concerning to anybody before we have our official meeting. Now Zach, do I need to read that statement about electronic meetings tonight?
You will at the meeting proper.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think.
I need to read it again. Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to see the minutes and was there anything glaring that you want to bring up or minor stuff we can correct right now?
It looked good.
Good to me. I didn't have any notations at all. So, okay.
Looked really good.
All right, well, we'll move on from that then. Conflict of interest? Anybody have a conflict of interest other than Ned because he wrote the original guidelines?
Yeah. No conflicts.
Okay, that sounds good. Finding a fact, we only have one. It's the Kazir PUD, I believe, or not PUD, but ADU. And it looked good. So Sue, will you handle that for us?
Yes, I'm furiously writing as you speak.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Well, then, one of our first general plan, the first items, a general plan amendment slash zone map amendment. So it's two items, one presentation, right Zach?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes. But Jared is taking this one on.
Oh, okay. Jared? So yeah, Ivory Development, we're going to see if we can finally do something with that big triangle on 53rd and 7th.
That is the plan. So this is, it is two, it is two different applications, general plan amendment and the zone map amendment. The general plan right now calls for it to be residential business. Interestingly enough, in 2003, the 2003 general plans future land use category for that particular property was mixed use. But we've modified that in 2017. And the zoning is CN neighborhood commercial. We have the recommend, we've recommended approval for both. So I'll be really quick and then let you guys ask questions if you have them. But our thinking is, as we've gone through the last three, four years, a lot of different commercial entities have taken a run at it for gas stations and things like that. None of that has worked because of the access restrictions that UDOT put in place along 700 West. It just won't work to get commercial traffic in and out of the site and they will not allow a, they will not allow an access under 5400 South under any circumstance. So the only access that we'll ever have for development of that property will be just a little bit of the south end. We did feel like engineering and planning, talking about it together, we did feel like the most appropriate zone that would allow them to most highest and best use to the property while still respecting kind of the limits of access and development would be something like RM 15, 12 units, the acre would work. We've seen a lot of good developments at 12 units, the acre, like the Brighton Homes Development and some of the others that have been done. So we felt like that was a good, a good win and that kind of development could be served by that limited access without causing a big problem. So that's why we've recommended approval for both of those.
So well, when something's approved, is it going to be okay to have just one entrance and exit? Or are they going to be able to engineer some, some type of two system?
Some type, some type of change?
Yeah, some, some double system. I don't know.
Short answer, the short answer is probably not. UDOT, that was looked at extensively also with UDOT and the commercial entities that were coming in. Well, what if we could just get an in and out up on the, up on the south end? Could we make that work and a full access on the south end and UDOT doesn't care? There's, there's not going to be a full access. They won't modify that island.
Yeah.
We won't modify and allow access from 54th of any kind. So we're, yeah, and that's, the developers are aware that there's going to be severely limited access, right in, right out only. And that is one of the concerns of the neighborhood. You'll hear us read the comments in tonight is the neighborhood saying, well, if everybody that uses it has to go south on 700 West, what if they're trying to get to 54th? Are they going to go up 5416 and then to Allendale? Or what if they just try to loop through our neighborhood to get out? And I guess the answer is that's probably what they'll do is go up to Allendale or they might loop through the neighborhood to come back again out the neighborhood.
Doesn't that limit the number of units that they can build also with one, one access point?
It does. But the number, the number for one access point would be 100 units. They won't even get close to that ballpark with it.
Okay. I didn't realize it was that high.
Yeah, they won't even get in the field. It's 30 single family homes or 100 apartment units or rental units attached housing.
And realistically, the most they're probably looking at is 30 units with the multifamily housing.
That would be the very best with the site constraints, the configuration and the access. It's probably going to be more like 20, honestly. If that, it's going to be tough and Ivory knows that. But townhomes are a really safe bet for sales and rentals in Utah. Had a national developer tell me there's three cities in the U.S. that he's never nervous, it wasn't Ivory obviously, but three cities in the U.S. he's never nervous about building townhome projects. Portland, Washington DC and Salt Lake City. He's never worried about townhomes.
You know, before we go on, I just want to mention Lisa joined us about five minutes ago. So we do have our whole crew here now.
Excellent. So we'll read those comments in tonight. They're, they're the concerns that you would probably expect, loss of privacy because the property's been vacant for a long time. And, and so their neighbors are worried about loss of privacy. They're worried about traffic impacting them. And there would be probably people going past, you know, looping around like they say. That's likely, I think, but you know, the traffic from 20 townhomes is not going to be anything compared to the six or 700 homes that are back there in that, in that area on their streets. They're not going to notice that in my opinion, but, and we do feel like it would work. They're worried about privacy, traffic and, yeah, noise, lighting. We can, we can deal, in my opinion, we can deal with all of those things during design and can buffer them and make sure things are taken care of. Their concern as citizenry too, is that they don't know what's coming and neither do we. And they find the whole process kind of backward. How can you approve the zone change when you don't know what they're going to build for sure? And as you know, we, we have to kind of approach it this way where we, we have to be ready for anything that could happen in RM 15, not just what Ivory might tell us they're going to do.
And yeah, and will you, will you illustrate the full, the full range of things that could happen?
Yep, we'll, we'll talk about all those from the plans and from the report and they've all, I've talked to a couple of different people from neighborhood on the phone and we've got comments from, I think, five of, five of the different neighbors. I think there's only nine homes that directly back the property. So we've got a good, we've had some good contact with them and they've all been really thoughtful and very, very, very polite, very respectful. I really appreciated that so far.
Make sure you mention that we could end up with a church or a charter school also.
That also happens too, yeah. We'll, we'll talk about that. Good point.
And Jared, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's off the cuff, so if I think about this more, I might think about it better. But I, and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like maybe when you tell someone they won't notice it much, they think, yeah, right, you said. But if you compare it to the options that could exist now, it might be less, like a hundred people in a commercial parking lot versus 20 homes. Maybe that would feel less like.
They're all, there's another, there's another point that we'll have to make. That's a great lead into the next point. Lisa, I'm glad you said it because I would have forgotten. The other, the other question they all asked was couldn't we just rezone it? We're all for rezoning it from commercial because they're worried about, they didn't like the idea of something like a Maverick Station or whatever being built there. But they, their thought is couldn't we rezone it to something less dense? Can we rezone it to single family zoning like ours? Then it would just match our neighborhood and be the same kind of thing. The challenge with that is that single family homes require subdivision, traditional subdivision that we can't really accomplish on that property because of the configuration and because of the proximity to that intersection. So I'll walk through that a little bit as well on the presentation. I think, I think I talked about that in the report, but in relation to the R and B zone that exists or that could be supported there now, that would allow some housing, that would allow housing types we'd have to subdivide for. These could be subdivided and owned, but as condo townhomes as opposed to, you know, single family or twin, twin homes or duplexes that you have to create some lots.
Jared, I have a procedural question. Do I have to do two? I know we have to have two motions for this.
Yeah.
However, do we need two public comment periods?
No, we've, we have, we have traditionally been okay with just the one open comment period for the two items since we're reviewing them together and they're tied so closely.
All right. Any other comments or questions right now on this?
So this is just about the diagram that's displayed. Is there truly a small piece of property that's not, that is between the property we're talking about and the backs of those homes? Is there a?
There is. It's about 11 feet wide. There's, there's actually the, the three different parcels. Two of them have the same address and they all have their own parcel numbers, though one of them is less than 200 square feet at the very bottom of the property. The other one is that long narrow piece. It's about 11 and a half feet wide, going all the way down the length of the main parcel.
Would that become part of the development?
That would be part of the development, part of the rezoning. We think that's, we can't show definitively for sure, but we think it's a mapping error that they just went to the backside of the, of the subdivision and called everything there R18 and assumed that that had been part of the subdivision that was created and it wasn't. It was part of this other parcel lands.
Mapping errors never happen.
Never, ever, right?
Especially not new subdivisions.
Technically, we'll be changing the zoning of, of that parcel potentially from R18 to RM 15, but we've, we've dealt with in terms of comparing the zones, we've just dealt with the RM 15 and the CN because we think it's a mapping error. So, but yeah, it's there. You're seeing.
Any other questions or comments before we move to the next item? Okay. All right. Well, our, our final item of the night and the bulk of our material that we received is the text amendment for the MCCD Design Guidelines, the repeal and replace of the existing design guidelines. So Jared or Zach?
This will be Zach.
This is all me. So I'll just do a quick, just overview of what I'm going to be presenting tonight and then I'll let you guys just ask questions. So we had a directive from the council to look at the design guidelines as part of the rewrite for the zoning ordinance that happened in October of 2019. So a year ago, we got the MCCD changes were adopted. So we have been working towards, working on new guidelines for that. We, we looked at both, or we looked at the existing guidelines and looked at what was possible and if things were there that we could continue to use. And overall, we thought that it's better to do a new document there. Let's see. Lot of the, most of this is informed through the general plan process. And when staff conducted a public survey, it was a scientific survey. I don't remember the year on that, Jared. Do you remember? 2015. He's saying it in mute, but I can read lips, okay?
2015. So I'm zoom embarrassed.
So he's zoom embarrassed. So we took those comments and that's what's kind of informed those shared values that you see in the proposed guidelines. And then we also, along with best practices in downtown development, that's what we really looked at. So there are 18 guidelines with, that are broadly based with, you know, wording that goes along with that. Each, and they're into four categories. I put up my hand like this, four categories. Do you like that? Yeah, four categories.
Well, it's four fingers, the sum doesn't count.
Yeah, four fingers and a thumb. So, and they go kind of in a hierarchy. So you know, you're looking at district wide guidelines, public space and streetscape, you get a little bit smaller, development site, and then with architectural guidelines. So, yeah, without getting into each and every one of them, what questions do you have on them? I'm happy to answer.
One of the things I'm, I just wanted to say real quick, what a nice job the presentation was of being put together. It was really well done. So thank you for that.
Ned's, Ned's going to save his firepower for the account, for the official meeting, I think.
No, I, I was a little pushed back at how, how little there is, how, what little guidance there really is. I mean, it's, it's, it's guidance, you can call it guidance, but I mean, it leaves it Which means that then the MCCD committee as well as this committee is going to have to, I think, look a lot closer at, and the staff, at what is being allowed, what is being approved.
Yeah, definitely. And I don't think that necessarily is a bad thing. So one of the reasons, one of the things that I had an issue with, with the initial guidelines is that there was this, this difference of whether something was, if it was the stand, either a standard or a guideline. So the document read as standards, as you must do this, and that should be reserved for the zoning ordinance. Guidelines are to be used as guidelines, as guiding doc, as a guiding document. And that was part of the reason for rewriting them in such a way is to allow for that to be more guidance as opposed to you must do that, this, you know, you must do A, B and C because that should be in the zoning ordinance. And that's kind of why we went the route that we did.
Can I jump in there for one second, real quickly, just to, to build on that, just very, very quickly to, as Zach said, we, the original document too, the guidelines read as standards, but the document itself calls them out as guidelines to provide for creativity and suggestion, et cetera. But then it lists them all as requirements and that was confusing to deal with. And the council's direction when we made the changes was to, they made the changes to the ordinance that codified some things and then, and then gave us a, a codified version of what the design guidelines were to be that was very definitively guidelines without requirements in them. So they've been written that way on, on purpose and that's partly because of the directive of, of the council when they made these changes. So I'll shut up now and let you get back to it.
Everything you're saying is making me excited because I think this is a big change in our community. I want to leave what I'm about to say with, I don't feel like I'm as prepared for this as I should be because Zach's put a lot of work into this. And so I read the new document and then I read the old document separately. If I had given myself more time, my next step would then to go through and then compare the two so I can make a more intelligent discussion. I apologize upfront for not having done that. So my discussion hasn't, isn't as intelligent as it should be. But I had six bullets that I want to ask you about and I think I should save them for the big question, big discussion. But my one question right here, because of your very nice explanation, the difference between guidelines and, uh, what was the other S word?
Standards.
Thank you. Standards. Where are those standards? Because I read through it and we don't talk about sustainability or gray water or drainage or wildlife and all that detail that we talked about in the original. I'm assuming that's because it's in the standard, which I also have not looked up. I apologize.
The standard would be the zoning ordinance, which does encourage sustainability, but it doesn't specifically, originally there was a, in the old ordinance, it called for lead to be used, if I'm, if I remember correctly.
That is correct.
And we, that was kind of, I'm trying to think of the right word. It wasn't arbitrary, but it, it led towards something that was, you know, a specific, lead is not a, is not just like a nonprofit. You have to pay for lead certification. There are other certifications, like there's the Living Building Institute. There are other things that you can do. So I believe as, when Jared and staff were rewriting the zoning ordinance, they wanted to be able to get those different types of certifications and not be hammered down to just.
We went with the Utah solution.
Yeah.
But I understand and I can respect that. I mean, I tell people we don't want to paint ourselves in a corner in case in three years from now, something else is a better standard. But where then do we describe our standard? I mean, even though we don't say lead specific, do we somewhere else say we want you to look at water recycling and drainage and wildlife habitats? Or do we just say, well, is that still in there?
I can probably speak to that better than Zach because I was the, the rewriter of, of the code last year. And some of those things that you're talking about, some standards did get moved from the design guidelines right into the code. Some of them were already there and others of them got removed from, from one or the other or both. And some of the, the language about sustainability was backed off significantly, if I'm being honest. We encourage LID, but that's one of the reasons that we backed off the language of, for example, low impact development was because we knew that the state was going to start requiring stormwater treatment on their own. So no one is exempted from treating stormwater, for example, anymore on a new project or project that has a certain acreage or a project that's redevelopment. However, no one is mandated by our code or our design guidelines anymore to include gray water, for example, as a part of their project. They can, but they're not mandated to. And that was a conscious, that kind of thing was a conscious decision on the, on the part of the city writ large, between the commission and the council. Those things were removed. Not all of them, but lots of them. Historic preservation notably is a lot different now than it was prior. Sustainability has changed somewhat. Some of the requirements are still there because they're state requirements and some of them are just encouraged in the guidelines now. And we have the, the Utah solution that Phil mentioned, the high performance building standards that are part of things for government buildings, but there's no certification necessary. You don't have to do, you have to do the things, but you don't have to pay for the certs. Some things like that have changed. So there are standards in the ordinance itself, but not all of them are going to have been taken directly out of the guidelines, the old guidelines and inserted into the ordinance. That was not done. Some of them are still there.
I think this will lead us into a very in-depth discussion in the general meeting and that. So I'm really looking forward to what everybody has to say. This is going to be very interesting tonight. Anything else? Or we could take a couple of minutes to have a quick break before our official meeting? Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll close the pre-meeting and we'll, we'll rejoin at 6:30 then. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like everybody's back. So let's, let's get started then. I would like to welcome everyone to the October 15th, 2020 meeting of the Murray City Planning Commission. I'm Phil Markham. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. With us this evening, we have commissioners Travis Nay, Maren Patterson, Sue Wilson, Lisa Milkovich, and Ned Hacker. Scott Woodbury is excused this evening. And staff, we have Jared Hall and Zach Smallwood, and also Melinda Greenwood is, is listening in this evening too. She'll be here if we need to be rescued for any reason. So with that, I would like to read an opening statement concerning the remote meeting tonight. This is a, an electronic meeting from a, a non-anchor location. So I will read this. As the Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Phil Markham, have determined that due to infectious disease, COVID-19 novel, novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-207, paragraph four, allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location so long as the public has an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We're holding tonight's Planning Commission meeting via video conference and the meeting is being live streamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a public comment to submit to the Planning Commission, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And so with that, I would like to address just a couple of ground rules and some background on how we will hopefully run the meeting this evening. If, if you have comments that you want to make regarding any of the agenda items, I would suggest that you start putting those together now and try to submit them as early as possible so that you don't feel pressed during the, the public comment period for each individual agenda item. Staff will receive those and we will read into the record all, all comments that we received this evening as well as some that were received prior to the meeting. This evening, as we go through our agenda, the first few items will be general business items that we will deal with and then we will get into the meat of our agenda. And tonight we have a, a general plan and zone map amendment by Ivory, Ivory Homes, Ivory Development. And we also have a text amendment for the Murray City, the MCCD Design Guidelines for the downtown area. And so those are our two items on the agenda this evening, other than business. And when staff will introduce each of these items, they'll have a brief presentation and then the commission will have a chance to ask them questions about their presentation. After that, we will have the applicant come up and add any additional information that they see that we may need. And then we'll have a public comment period, bring it back up for further discussion and hopefully have a resolution, either approval or denial of, of the agenda item. So with that, we'll get started. And the first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. And we have two minutes to approve this evening. The first one is the minutes of the Thursday, September 17th, 2020 meeting and the Thursday, October 1st, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes and are there any questions or concerns with those or corrections? All right. Seeing that, I would, I would call for a motion of approval if, if you see fit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to the commission approve the commission meeting minutes from September 17th and the October 1st meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. I've got a motion by Ned and a second by Lisa Milkovich to approve those, the minutes of those two meetings as read into the record. Those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Conflict of interest? Do we have any concerns about a conflict of interest from any members of the commission this evening with any agenda items?
No.
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 I do not either. So no conflict of interest to worry about. Finding a fact, we have one finding of fact this evening. It is the Kazir ADU. And has everyone had a chance to, to look at that? I personally thought that everything looked fine and reflected the decision that we made. Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for the Kazir ADU by Robert Kazir for a conditional use permit to allow the use of an accessory dwelling unit at 388 East Hillside Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Maren. I, I have a motion and a second on the Kazir ADU for approval. Those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. With that, let's, let's get to the meat of our agenda this evening. We have a general plan amendment and zone map amendment and we will have one presentation dealing with both of these agenda items. However, we will have a separate vote for each of these items before the evening is done. And Jared is going to present this information to us this evening. You are muted, Jared. Jared, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Just one second.
There you go.
I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
Okay. Can you all see the presentation?
presentation?
Yep.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So this is a double part application, as you mentioned, Chairman Markham. The general plan and zone map amendments for 5448 South and 5452 South, 700 West. I'll just show you quickly on this aerial photograph. The larger parcel right here is the the bigger portion of this. It's about 2.74 acres altogether. Most of it contained in this one single parcel. And then there's this long strip right here. That's another big portion. And then there's a little tiny piece back here that's 180 square feet or so. Doesn't even register when you try to get the mapping to tell you how many acres it is. But that's also part of it. It has the same address as this other long piece.
Hey, Jared, I I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it looks like we're seeing the the wrong thing.
Okay, hang on. Let's see. Why would that be the case? Sorry, give me just one second. Nope. Gonna somehow drag this over to the other screen.
Yeah, you need to share the slide because it's projected.
Okay. How about now?
Yes.
Yes, now you can see it? Okay. All right. Sorry about that. So this is the the larger part that I was talking about while you were looking at something else. It makes up the bulk of the property. And then there's this longer skinny piece here. Altogether, 2.74 acres. It's mostly vacant. There is a small older home on it currently. It is in the CN zone right now, Neighborhood Commercial Zone. The request is to rezone it to RM15, which is the same as the Appleyton condos up here across the street, CrossFit 400 South. Other zones in the area include this R18 zoning that's all to the south of it. Most of the properties for a long ways to the south are R18 zoning. You have commercial property here where the Smiths Shopping Center is located and across the street here. CrossFit 400 South here, Allendale. The two parts of this application are the zone map, which we're talking about here, and also the future land use map that's part of the general plan. As you guys are aware, the the future land use map part of the general plan identifies and designates different parcels with different future land use categories. This particular parcel, this property has been identified for residential business, which supports different kinds of zones. The only zone that residential business supports is RNB. So that's why the necessity to change, if we're going to rezone the property to RM15, we would also want to rezone, or sorry, to redesignate the property in the future land use map to medium density residential, which supports R16, RM15, et cetera. That's the reasoning for that. I I wanted to talk a little bit about the property itself and the different things that are allowed in the different zones. That's the main thrust of the of the request. As we said before, it's zoned for commercial, Neighborhood Commercial, so lighter duty commercial, but that does allow some different things. I was gonna read just a few that were in your staff report for the public record and for those that are listening to know. In the existing CN zone, for example, permitted uses include single-family dwellings that are attached to non-residential uses like caretakers, utilities and hardware, variety stores, apparel stores, furniture and drug stores, medical cannabis, bookstores, sporting goods, restaurants, banks, real estate and insurance offices and other professional offices, dry cleaners, beauty parlors, massage therapy businesses, locksmiths, charter schools and pet grooming. There are some conditional uses allowed in the CN zone that include convenience stores and gas stations, check cashing, assisted living facilities, commercial childcare centers like kindercares, et cetera, libraries, repair services, commercial printing, discount stores, shopping centers that are less than 10 acres and veterinary services. Interestingly, we have had over the number of years that this has been zoned, Neighborhood Commercial, which has been since at least 2003. We've had several different companies take a look at the property and try to find a way to put a gas station on here. This that's been the most common interest in the property has been from service stations. None of them have been able to make that work, and we'll talk about why in in a few minutes here in the presentation, but none of them have been able to make that work over the years. And as we considered it, we have come to support changing the zoning from commercial as a staff. The commercial, or sorry, the requested zone is RM15. To talk about some of the things that are allowed in the RM15 zone as they compare to CN zoning. The RM15 zone would allow as permitted uses single-family detached dwellings on 8,000 square foot lots, two-family dwellings on 10,000 square foot lots, utilities and charter schools, residential childcare, so in-home childcare. And then as conditional uses, it would allow attached single-family dwellings, so things like townhomes, multifamily dwellings at 12 units per acre, bed and breakfasts, retirement homes, cemeteries, television transmitting stations, schools, parks and churches. The the main reason that we have supported as a planning and engineering staff, a change to something like RM15 is twofold. It it allows the it allows the property to be developed to what we would consider its highest and best use, which is one of the standards we're always trying to meet as we consider things, without within the limits of the accessibility of the property. So right now, as it stands, if somebody could find a way to gain better access, they could develop a service station or something like that, and it it wouldn't necessarily require a whole lot of of review, but it's not been possible because of the access situation. I want to review that really quickly. 700 West, you can see right here in the middle of the of the of the diagram. It it drains a lot of uses, most of them single-family in nature and an accessory to single-family schools and churches, et cetera. But there's a lot of traffic on 700 West coming from these large areas residential development. And as a result of that, this intersection of 5400 South and 700 West is extraordinarily busy. The UDOT, a number of years ago, redesigned the intersection, and it's a little bit different. It's designed to get people from that large residential area to the south out onto 5400 South. And in doing so, they put a high curb median down this one lane coming southbound. And it goes almost past the full length of the property. You can see just right this very south end of the property is available to get an access into. As it stands, it would be right in, right out only. And that's been the problem for commercial development. A residential development like the townhome development will survive right in, right out only as a limitation, but a commercial development will not. So they've all walked away from the property and UDOT is not. We've tried several times to have discussions with them about making that change. That will not happen. Going back one slide, that was to show this area on 5400 South. There's all this frontage on 5400 South. UDOT also will not grant an access on 5400 South to this property. We've tried in many, many cases to to talk to them about that. And as you're aware, they they wouldn't actually grant an access onto 5400 South for the Applegate Townhomes or the Applegate condominiums that exist and are woefully underserved for another access out, even just with their existing numbers, setting aside the new development they want to do. So UDOT will not budge on that, which brings us back to this issue here. And one of the principal reasons that planning and engineering have supported a change to RM15. It allows the highest and best use of the property. It gets us some of that as a city, some of that missing middle housing that's very sorely needed and allows for development of the property that should have minimal impacts that can be controlled through design. That's one more thing that I wanted to talk about just really briefly. We have not talked about a specific project, and there is no specific project in mind for the property that we can consider tonight. That application would come later if the property is rezoned by the city council after the planning commission has made a recommendation depending on the outcome of this meeting. I've had a couple of conversations with neighborhood residents from the area here south of the property about that, and they they're nervous because they don't know what's coming or what could come. They don't have a project to look at and say, how will how can we be protected by this? And you'll hear some of that in the comments that we're going to read in tonight. And I've tried to express to them, explain to them how how we have to do things. We have to be able to say that the property should be zoned, rezoned to RM15 without knowing exactly what's coming, because you can never depend on that from from the development community. Not that the development community is bad, but things change. So we've we've refrained from reviewing a project. Obviously, I can say that what Ivory Development is interested in doing are townhomes. That is, that is their plan. And so likely the project that you would see if it's rezoned before you would be a townhome project. And we would review for access and for buffering and and all those kind of concerns, that kind of project. With that said, we do as a planning staff recommend approval, that the planning commission recommend forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for both the amendment to the general plans, future land use map to re designate the property and to the zoning map amendment to rezone from CN Neighborhood Commercial to RM15 multifamily medium density residential.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Yeah. Questions from the commissioners?
Sure. So if you go back to that photo that shows the size, that's perfect. You don't think far enough south that they'll be able to do left-hand turns in and out of there?
It's possible that we could arrange some kind of left-hand turn out of here, but it's difficult because that has been this right here, there is actually a left turn arrow that's kind of worn off, but there's a left turn that's been allowed out of Smiths onto that area right there. So a left turn might be really tricky or problematic right there out of a development on this property. It it could be possible, but I want to look at that in design, and I'm not sure.
Jared, that that left turn out of Smiths, there is a protected lane, though. That's a protected merge lane that works into southbound 7th 7th West. I just, I don't see how you could introduce competing traffic going the opposite direction.
That's what this solid line is for. They specifically ran this median all the way up here so no one would come southbound in this area and try to turn left from 7th West into there. So I think, yeah, it's it's not likely that we'd get anything different. It's probably a right in, right out only development, which is part of the reason for the RM15 as opposed to commercial. There's no commercial interest in it that way. Incidentally, too, and I'm glad you asked the question, because I didn't really deal with this in the in the presentation, but there's been some some questions about subdivision, about single-family zoning instead of medium-density zoning, single low-density areas instead, so that it would mirror the the single-family nature of this neighborhood here. Very stable, very nice neighborhood, and it's and it's a it's a valid question. So I want to, I want to try to speak to that a little bit for those that I wasn't able to talk to on the phone. Subdivision in Murray is only allowed on a public right-of-way. So if we're going to create traditional single-family lots as these are, we have to run a public road from 7th West down into the property and cul-de-sac that road. And UDOT has precluded that public right-of-way getting put in because it would be too close to this intersection that they have gone to great lengths to protect. An access road into RM15 or to a a a townhome development, we could get past UDOT because it's not a publicly dedicated right-of-way, and we do a different kind of subdivision, condominium subdivision to create ownable townhomes or rentable townhomes, depending on what they would propose. But subdivision of the property gets problematic for single-family detached homes, and that's why we're recommending again the RM15. It would allow for ownable townhomes, but without the problem of the public right-of-way that were required by city ordinances if we're doing single-family detached lots.
I guess the the only way something else could really be proposed there is if the one or two of the property owners to the south were willing to sell.
That's true. And I think that in the past they have been, there has been some attempt to approach owners further south. That hasn't gone well. And so the commercial landed these anyway, attempted to aggregate other properties to the development as well to get the right in and, or sorry, to get the full access in and out, full full intersections with the property, and that's not gone well. So this particular application is just for the subject properties.
Jared, can you touch on how many units are allowed with a single access on on a piece of property in Murray?
Yeah, thank you, Phil. That's a that's a great question. So with a single access that will allow 30 single-family homes, it would allow, engineering standards would allow 30 single-family home lots with a single access or 100 multifamily units. The density that would be allowed by RM15 zoning, and that's a little tricky, too. I should probably explain that. The Murray City's RM15 zoning allows 12 units per acre. And I'm not even going to go into why we call it RM15 when what we're really allowing is our is 12 units, but we allow 12 units per acre in the RM15 zone. This is 2.74 acres. The overall density that would be allowed is 32 units or 30 units. Sorry.
But then you have to account for roads and and open space and everything else also.
Once you provide the amenity that would be required in a PUD like that and the the open space that's needed, and account for the odd nature of the shape and and the unusable portions of the property and the configuration standards that you have, it's it's probably less than 32 by a number. And again, we'd have to be looking at a design to to say what works and what doesn't. But my guess is professionally, it'll be less than 32, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments at this time?
I just have one more. So I I know that our setback standards are 25 feet. Is that something that that could be considered up against 5400 South, you know, closing that distance in and allowing them extra room up against the property line there? Or is it really 25 feet, most sides of the of the unit?
That's a, that's a great question. And and the the short answer is yes. It's likely that depending on the kind of project that's proposed, but knowing what Ivory is talking about, it would likely be a PUD project, and that would allow us to vary that setback and get greater buffering to the units south or to the lots south and push the project toward 54th, where there is an actually a lot of space between 5400 South's actual used right-of-way and and the the homes themselves. It's this is the kind of property where we'd want to see a tree survey and try to keep the existing trees here so they could buffer the, not only the neighborhood that exists, but the new neighborhood coming in. And there could be some some good things done here. There's a lot of space that we could push the units up against, yes. We need PUD to do it, but yeah, we could do that.
I I have a question, Jared. What is the closest distance to the corner of 53rd and 700 that an access could be put in?
They will push it as far to the south as we will, to the very south end, as far to the south as the property goes.
Right, but I'm I'm asking how close to the intersection could it be?
It it wouldn't, they wouldn't like to allow it any closer than 300 feet. This property is only 270 feet wide along 700 West. So it will be already closer than they want. But the property already has access. So by standing, we'll we'll get to put in a new access or keep the access that we've got as far south as we can put it. But that's that's basically it. If they could have it further than 300 feet away, they would. But the standard's 300, yes.
All right. Is 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 the applicant listening in this evening?
I'll look and see if Brian's on.
Okay, yeah. Anyone from Ivory?
Yes, this is Brian Prince with Ivory here tonight.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Prince. Is there anything that that you would like to add to the presentation this evening?
No, as usual, Jared did an excellent job of giving overview. And he's correct that the Ivory Development's vision here is a townhome product that would comply with the RM15 ordinance.
Okay. All right. Any any questions from the commission for the the applicant? Okay, all right. Well, seeing none. Right now, I would like to open this up for public comment. And during the time that we will allow for additional comments to come in, Jared, I understand that we have five previously received comments. Is that correct?
That's right. Five or six. I forget how many. Zach offered to read them for me tonight if I would read his, so.
Wonderful. All right. Well, Zach, the the floor is yours to to read those in. And and please, if anyone listening has additional comments they would like to have read into the record, I would get busy on those right now and submit them as soon as you can.
All right. So I will begin. This is from, let me just verify, Dean and Diane Bentley at 740 Quaking Aspen Drive. They state, Murray City Planning Commission, with regards to the application to amend the zoning designation of the property addressed as 5448 South, 700 West in Murray from Neighborhood Commercial to RM15 Medium Density Multifamily Residential. We are pleased a change would be made from Neighborhood Commercial, but very concerned about the ramifications of changing the zoning to Medium Density Multifamily Residential. Our primary concern is the diminished or total loss of privacy, which very likely will occur due to a planned development of that nature on the property. Secondary to that would be light pollution and the lack of proper property maintenance that might result with medium-density multifamily units, as well as traffic concerns with improper or insufficient access to the development. Medium Density Multifamily Residential allows Medium Density Multifamily Residential allows for two-story townhomes, row houses, or duplexes. With any of these adjacent to our property, we would experience a diminished, if not total, loss of privacy. We have our doubts that should such a housing plan be submitted, that we would have any voice with regards to the placement of the structures. Though such structures would maximize profit for the developer, it would surely decrease the values, value of our homes. Thus, we would advocate for a change to low-density residential instead. It would be in keeping with the almost 100% of the dwellings for several blocks to the south of 5400 South. Low-density residential also provides safe, walking-friendly neighborhoods that invite play and social interaction, which is the glue that binds communities. What's even more concerning are the permitted conditional use structures in this zoning designation, which include, among others, bed and breakfast inns, retirement homes, independent living, or congregate care, all of which are usually up to three stories, and low-rise multiple-family dwellings, which could be up to three stories or the allowed 40 feet high. From Salt Lake County assessor records, it appears that the majority of the planning commission members, if not all, live in low-density residential developments. We believe that you would express equal dismay if such structures would be allowed to go up adjacent to your homes. While row houses and townhomes and duplexes create more affordable options for homebuyers, these by nature are more often than not stepping stones into single-family dwellings. The average length and number of years of ownership for such dwellings is far less than for single-family homes, thus resulting in greater turnover, less concern and care for the maintenance of properties, and an overall less stable and less safe living environment, all of which affect the quality of life in our area and the value of our homes. Again, we feel that low-density residential is far more in keeping with the present makeup of the area and that a different designation would have a tremendously adverse effect upon the value of our homes and neighborhood. Sincerely, Dean and Diane Bentley.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, this next one is from E. Marcus and Rochelle White at 776 West Quaking Aspen Drive. Dear members of the Murray City Planning Commission, Jared Hall and Ivory Development, thank you for the opportunity to give input to the request for rezoning on the property that borders our homes and neighborhood. Also, thank you to those who have taken their time to answer questions and assist us in our part of the process. The future of this property has always been of interest to the neighborhood and also a concern for many years. It was inevitable that at some time it would be developed, and the wonderful quiet farm bordering our homes would be no more. It is not our intention to say not in our neighborhood, but it is imperative that we, whom will be most impacted, have an opportunity for dialogue and respectfully considered in the decision process. With limited knowledge of what Ivory's development, Ivory Development's plans for this property look like, it is extremely difficult to know how to address several of our concerns. We understand your hands may be tied concerning disclosure and also because plans may not have been fully presented. Unfortunately, this pretty much leaves us blindfolded while trying to see or determine what the future looks like. This is quite frustrating. So with this limited knowledge, following are a few of the concerns and issues we hope will be considered by Murray City and Ivory Development. Privacy, ultimately, privacy is of utmost importance. We respectfully request a plan for generous setbacks from our property lines that are non-intrusive and consistent with the longstanding personal privacy we currently enjoy with our neighbors. Consideration of the impact on our property values. We have invested much of our hard-earned money, sweat, and time into our properties. It is a legitimate and serious concern that this very important personal asset be preserved and protected. Height and density, again, privacy and property valuation impact should be considered. Pollution, light and noise pollution from increased traffic and building structures. Aesthetics, a development that reflects the care and character of our outstanding neighborhood. A development with quality finishes, green space, fencing, et cetera. Owner-occupied residences, this consideration is very important to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood. We hope to see owner-occupied residents with an 80% owner occupancy stipulation for the development. Traffic flow and access, it is no secret that access is a serious issue for this property. Our concern is the number of cars forced to make a right onto 700 West. The current design of the road is optimal. It has alleviated accidents and optimized traffic flow. It would be a travesty to alter the current design. Anyone exiting the property that will need to go west on 5400 South, east on 5400 South, north on 700 West, or wanting to enter the property while traveling north on 700 West will be seriously impacted. The concern is that these cars will then use our neighborhood as a U-turn or turnaround access. This is a scary thought. Again, thank you for your time, concern, and consideration. We love Murray. Our family has been part of the fabric of Murray for four generations. We have a vested interest in seeing that the unique and outstanding character of our wonderful city continue well into the future. We look forward to respectful dialogue and cooperation as we move forward to a positive outcome for our neighborhood. Those residents who will be moving close to us and from Murray City, respectfully, E. Marcus and Rochelle White.
Thank you.
Okay, this next one is from Regina, and I apologize if I butcher this. Napalitano?
Napalitano.
Napalitano, there we go. Hey, look at that. All right. Address is 746 West Quaking Aspen Drive. She states, I have brief questions. One, there appears to be about a six-foot space between the north property lines of the homes bordering the lot and the south property line of the proposed lot. What is the, what is proposed for that space? Two, has Ivory Development provided plans for what they intend to build on this site if the zoning change is approved? If not, would a different zoning change, say, to low-density slash single-family be acceptable? Three, what is the proposed timeline for construction from start to finish? For example, begin December 2020 and end June 2021? And that's all for that one. Okay. Next one is from Rex Maury at 684 West, 5465 South. To whom it may concern, my name is Rex Maury, and I live at 684 West, 5465 South, just around the corner from this property. I am opposed to any change to this property that will increase traffic in the area. Currently, because of the traffic island on 700 West, I have 15 to 20 cars U-turning in my driveway every day in spite of signage requesting they do not, that not turn here, there. This has caused damage to my concrete. Because of the island, people living in apartments on that property will naturally need to turn down our street to access routes in any direction except straight south. Our street already has increased traffic from individuals trying to avoid the light at the intersection. Many speed along our street endangering children, pets, and adults walking in the neighborhood. There is also an inordinate number of traffic accidents at the corner of 5300 South and 700 West. It seems that emergency crews are there every few days cleaning up an accident. Any increase in traffic in this area will only exacerbate the problems in this area. Thank you, Rex M. Maury, 684 West, 5465 South. Okay. And this next one is from Seth and Jerrilyn Merrill at 5451 Quaking Aspen Drive. Sorry, my throat's getting a little hoarse there for a second. Murray City Planning Commission, I believe that changing the zoning to residential is a good idea. However, doing so without a firm plan for what will be built on the lot under discussion is a poor idea. It gives existing residents no way to provide feedback on a detailed plan so that any plan can incorporate such feedback to create solutions that will promote harmony between the developer and existing residents. In the absence of a specific plan, here is a list, here is a list major concerns I have as an existing resident whose property borders the lot under discussion. These principles apply whether the lot is zoned commercial or residential. One, privacy. Development of the lot under discussion will negatively affect privacy for existing residents. Affected residents have enjoyed privacy in their backyards for many years, some for more than two decades. Please require that any structures built on the lot are single-story with basement, not two-story. Existing residents have fences along the back of their property, but if two-story structures are built, the privacy benefit of the fence will be nullified, with new inhabitants gazing down into the yards, bedrooms, and living spaces of the existing houses. Two, light and noise pollution. Please prevent bright, directed, or elevated lights from shining into the back of existing residence's house. It is psychologically disconcerting to have a spotlight shine into the back of your house. Please place any new road construction on the 5400 South side of the lot rather than along the existing resident fence line. So existing residents are not sandwiched with traffic running immediately and proxim, proximally on both sides of their lots. Number three, traffic. Seventh West is already a very difficult intersection, especially at peak traffic hours. For ingress, if the concrete median is removed so that new inhabitants can access the lot from Seventh West northbound, it will hold up traffic during the day. For egress, if the concrete median is not removed, then new inhabitants of the lot under discussion will have no way to go north on Seventh without first going south. Where will they turn around? If they are going to the freeway, one possibility is that they will make a left onto 5465 South and then another left onto Allendale. But what if they are trying to go north on Seventh West or west on 5400 South? A probable, but very negative possibility is that they will head south and take the first right west onto Aspen Heights and then make a U-turn either at the first intersection in front of 5481 Quaking Aspen Drive, in front of, in front of the wide elbow, in front of 5451 Quaking Aspen Drive, and 740 Quaking Aspen Drive. Cars already use it for this purpose infrequently. By completing a larger circle from Aspen Heights to Chapparol to Quaking Aspen Drive, none of the, those are desirable for existing residents. If development of the lot under discussion is not handled carefully, it will lower the quality of life for existing residents, promote contention between residents, developer, owner, and city employees at future hearings, and depress property values. I support the rezoning to residential, but a suggestion that may address the above concerns better than the existing proposal, rezone instead to R18 Low Density Residential. That will simply extend the characteristics of the existing neighborhood. Single-family residents, long tenure per family into the newly-developed area. Respectfully, Seth and Jerrilyn Merrill, 5451 Quaking Aspen Drive. Okay. That is all I have, and I do not see any emails unless Jared has received any emails.
Nope. Okay. Well, that was a considerable amount of time to allot for public comment. I think we've been generous in providing notice to have those submitted. So with that, I will close the public comment portion of this agenda item, and I would bring it back up to the applicant if there's anything you would like to add or address concerning those comments, sir?
I think none of the comments are surprising. Again, sorry, Brian Prince with Ivory Development. In regards to the building height and privacy, from my understanding with the proposed zoning ordinance, we would be limited in height to a height that's comparable to other residential structures next door. So I don't know if, along with the fact that the Neighborhood Commercial has permitted conditional uses that would be just as high or higher than, than the structures adjacent to the site as well as what would be allowed within the RM 15. And so I don't know if, if that's a relevant concern. I mean, I understand the concern, but I think it's, as far as the building height, to be similar to the single-family that's built next door. And as well as the setbacks will prohibit, you know, having the residential structures really close to the adjacent property line. And, you know, my only, my only thought is, is obviously, this is a land use discussion. You know, for those that are listening, for the residents that are listening, that there are still several hoops that, and steps that Ivory Development would work, would have to go through and working with staff on a subdivision design that would address the traffic and intersection concerns that were brought up in those comments. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
Well, I think it's fair to say that you really can't provide a plan at this point until you know that something is going to be permitted that would, would allow a plan to be developed. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so that, that is why this, this is the first step. There would be another hearing dealing with subdivision approval, site plan approval, and so forth. So this is by no means a green light to start building, you know, in a month or two. There are utility questions that would need to be answered with city staff. There's, there's a lot of variables that need to be dealt with and answered, so I would just like to mention that. Jared, was, was there anything else from a staff perspective that you would like to address concerning the public comments?
Just really quickly, one of the questions, one of the questions that was raised was about the seeming six-foot space between the subdivision fence and the property. And that is, again, it was probably answered for that person's question earlier, but just to make sure, in case they tuned in later, that is another part of the parcel that would be developed. So it looks like a six-foot space. It's really just part of the, part of the development, the subject parcels. And then, yeah, I would just echo what you and Brian were just saying, there's much more to do, and there's, and the public would certainly be involved in those processes as well. So I don't want them to feel like this is the last, like they'll never have the chance to look at the design and say, I'm okay with that, thanks for considering this, et cetera. There'll be those, those meetings to be had, too. And, and they, this is, without being gushy, the, the comments that came in on this were really thoughtful. I really appreciated kind of the tenor and the thoughtfulness of the comment and that they took the time to really think through all the things that could be potential problems for them. It gives us something to shoot at when we're looking at design. And so I, yeah, I would look forward to doing more of that with them, with the neighborhood when we're looking at a design, if that's the case.
And I would like to mention also something we, we just briefly touched on in the pre-meeting that you had mentioned that previously to this being zoned commercial, it was zoned as multi, multifamily previously, is that correct?
The Future Land Use Map was for, was for multifamily in the 2003 general plan. So this is our, it's been zoned C Neighborhood Commercial for a while, and during the general plan in 2003, it was zoned Neighborhood Commercial. So it was never zoned mixed-use, but it was in the Future Land Use Map.
Okay.
As a mixed-use. So from 2003 to 2017, people approaching us to, to change the zoning would have been told, well, that the appropriate zone is mixed-use of some kind. Found that interesting. We took it out of that when we did the 2017 general plan, and we still kind of felt like we might have a shot at doing something in the R and B zone or in that existing CN zoning. It just has not worked out.
Sure.
Concerns about that have grown in the coming years.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Yes, Lisa?
One other thought, Mr. Hall. You did a great job in your presentation, and you stated that, that there is not really a way to provide a public right-of-way so that it could be zoned for single-family housing. I just wanted to work that over one more time because it seems to be... I just wanted to work that over one more time because it seems to be addressed most of the concerns of the residents.
Yeah, that was in the pre-meeting, so, yeah.
Oh, sure.
And if you could restate that. And also, I'm scratching my head thinking, is there any other way to get a public road in there? And the only way I could look at it, and I don't know as much as you do, but would be actually take out houses, existing houses on Quaker Aspen Road, which isn't going to happen. No one wants to sell their house. So talk about that for a second, will you?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a good point. So to get a public road, to subdivide traditionally, traditional subdivision lots like these that exist on Quaking Aspen, and that was brought up, can we just extend kind of the aesthetic that we have? Were we to do that, we would back those lots, let's say we were going to back those lots up to these lots. And you can kind of visually get an idea here, what you would be able to do. You would have to run a public road somehow onto this property. Our minimum standard for a public right-of-way is 49 feet. And that's the bare minimum. Aspen Heights is 50. So if you can kind of imagine that road transposed here, UDOT will not give us permission to put a public right-of-way intersection here. It's too close. Ned asked earlier about that distance that's required from that major intersection. 5400 South is a major arterial, and 700 West is a major collector. And the intersection of those two is going to require at least 300 feet to the next public right-of-way. And that's why these roads are where they are. We won't get approved for another public road here.
But they would allow a private road?
They have to allow us a private access, not a private road necessarily, but a private access of some kind. We could do a 26 or 24-foot-wide private access in to serve condo townhomes or something like that. They have to allow us that because we already have a driveway on this property. They can't completely land-lock a property. They're not allowed to. So we can get an access, but we can't get a public right-of-way.
Thank you.
I hope that, I think that answers that.
That was, yeah, excellent question, Lisa. I'm glad that you asked for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'll, you know, if we have any question, I mean, any comments or discussion, I still would entertain that from the commission. If not, I would gladly entertain a motion on the general plan amendment.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I'd like to say first that I agree there's a lot of planning to do before anything gets constructed here. And plenty of opportunity for additional public input for other things that you could do on the streets to help through traffic, other traffic calming devices, that sort of thing that prevents speeding in neighborhoods. That said, I would like to make a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the general plan future land use map, redesignating the property located at 5484 and 5452 South, 700 West, from residential business to medium-density residential.
And Ned, I will just correct one address. It's 5448 South. That's okay. Just wanted that for the record. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Lisa. I have a motion by Ned Hacker and a second by Lisa Milkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the general plan future land use map, redesignating the property located at 5448 and 5452 South, 700 West, from residential business to medium-density residential. Please call for a vote.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Markham?
Yes. And I would like to emphasize that this is a recommendation to the city council. There will be another opportunity for people to address this in a public meeting, a public council meeting at a future date that will be set. And that applies to both of these actions that are under consideration this evening. And now I would like to move to the zone map amendment recommendation. If there are any questions or further discussion, I'd be happy to entertain that. Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at 5448 and 5452 South, 700 West, from CN Neighborhood Commercial to RM15 multifamily medium-density residential.
Thank you, Merron. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. I have a motion by Merron Patterson, a second by Lisa Milkovich, that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the requested amendment to the zoning map designation of the property located at 5448 and 5452 South, 700 West, from CN Neighborhood Commercial to RM15 multifamily medium-density residential. Please call for a vote.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Both items carry a positive recommendation to the city council. The final decision, once again, will be to the city council. And this will be revisited in the future if this is approved by the council. And there's a lot of opportunity for public comment going forward. And we really do welcome civil dialogue on this. And we appreciate everybody's questions and involvement tonight. Thank you. Okay, moving to our next agenda item. Item number six is the Murray City Planning Division proposing to repeal the existing MCCD design guidelines and adopt the proposed MCCD design guidelines to be used for design and review of new development applications as stated in the Murray City Land Use Ordinance. And so Zach will be presenting this to us this evening?
Yes, I will. I am going to kick Jared out of sharing his screen. I stopped participants sharing. There we go, I did it. I have all that power. Let's see. Let me now begin here. Can you guys see my screen all right?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Sorry, I just need to get all situated there for a second.
There's not much there, but we see it.
Yes. As there shouldn't be right now. There we go. Okay. So one, that makes my face look really orange. So we'll get started. So like you had mentioned, this item is a recommendation to the city council regarding the repeal and replacement of the Murray City Center District Design Guidelines. The Murray City Center District, I'm just going to go over it just real quickly. It is approximately 100 acres in the, located in central Murray. It is the traditional downtown that Murray has grown from. And, yeah, that's what, that's part of why we're looking at this so, with so much detail here. So what are design guidelines? First, design guidelines are best practices. They are also used as a document to help review potential projects and provide direction to the DRC, which is the Design Review Committee, the Planning Commission, staff and developers when they come forward with projects. They are not requirements and a list of boxes to be checked. That is throughout planning and in most cases, those design guidelines are not used as what would be called standards. So with that, go here. So a couple housekeeping items there. So from summer to October of 2019, the zoning ordinance was being rewritten and looked at. And I apologize, my throat's still a little hoarse from reading, so I apologize. As part of that update, the language referring to the design guidelines was changed to provide greater clarity for the many stakeholders that may develop or review potential projects. With that change, updated guidelines needed to be crafted to reflect the new language and be more manageable for reviews by those groups that I had mentioned, the DRC staff and the Planning Commission. So moving on, this past April, we decided that it was time to get those written and taken care of. So we began to go through existing planning documents to get an idea of what should be included in the new guidelines. We reviewed the 2017 general plan, which you can see, you know, right there. Initiative number one was the City Center District. There was a lot of public input and comment regarding the City Center District. We used that comment and data to guide how we would be doing, how we would craft new design guidelines. We also included the 2015 community survey that was mailed out to all citizens of Murray and used the findings in that to craft the five shared values. So you have authentic, active, inclusive, multimodal, and connected. So I'll just briefly touch on those real quickly. Authentic, meaning a real place, somewhere that citizens of Murray would gravitate towards and meet as a community. Active, we labeled three components to this value. That it needed to be a physically active place where people are physically meeting and gathering downtown and contributing to that experience. Socially active, where someone can meet up with like a friend, a family member, enjoy a meal, see a show, or just be there together. And thirdly, a mentally active place. So one that creates interesting open spaces, interesting architecture, and innovative places, and that generates a lot of activity. Next is inclusive. Murray has always been a welcoming community and has been, that's been very important to Murray residents and citizens. This is important to many of them and important to keep in mind when we were drafting the design guidelines. Multimodal. I'll just go back here. They actually, it's initiative number five in the general plan, a city geared toward multimodality. That was something that was important. Having additional ways to get to places was something that citizens valued. Lastly is connected. Citizens value the ability to get to and from places that they enjoy with relative ease. Again, initiative number four there, linking centers, districts to surrounding context. So we relied heavily on the general plan and to inform to inform that thinking. So today, we're here looking and reviewing the actual design guidelines themselves. Using those five as our guideposts, we looked to other cities and best practices in downtown development. We came up with 18 design guidelines, which is a change from the 43 that were in the old design guidelines. These are categorized into four broad areas that go from a 30,000-foot level down to the building, the actual site level of the building. So we'll start off with district-wide. And I'm just going to briefly touch on one or two of the individual guidelines and then I'll open it up for questions with you guys. So the first one I wanted to touch on was sustainability. So encouraging the use of solar and energy to shade areas and generate power. As you can see on the image on your left, that is actually the Salt Lake City Public Safety Building. They've used solar generating power cells to use as a shading device as well. So that you are, you're doing dual duty there pretty much. You're providing shade at the same time generating solar power. The image on the right is 900 South. That is the confluence of Red Butte Creek. There we go. And it serves as a way to naturally clean the creek through a series of different bioswells there. So that goes and speaks to the designing of functional stormwater features as an amenity. This is also a small public park that people can go and be informed. This was one of the things that we had suggested at, for City Hall, for example, that was implemented. There's going to be bioswells with public information on how this can be used within their own homes. So I'll move on to public spaces and street scape. So the one I wanted to speak to here is street scape. It's one of the most important aspects of any built environment is the street. These are just as they state, best practices in creating interesting and safe public spaces and a public realm that prioritizes the pedestrian. So I highlight the images here. On the left, street trees provide physical barriers while also providing cover for pedestrians. I believe strongly in street trees. I think they're one of the best things to help people move through a site. It's one of the best things to help people feel safe when walking. The image on the right is creating public and private transition zones. So as you can see, this is the George and Dolores Theater on Main Street. You can see kind of that clear walking path here. But it does allow for a transition. You can see kind of where the public realm kind of stops and you get this private this private transition zone with, you know, like the staircase and stuff for people to stop and actually enjoy themselves. Moving on to development sites. You have six guidelines within this one, so I chose two to look at. One is open space. So avoiding open spaces, open spaces that exclude the public. For example, here in downtown Salt Lake, you can see there's an open courtyard beyond this beautiful gate. That should be discouraged in future projects. And then the image on the right is ensure new developments have park and open space access. So you can see that, you know, all these buildings in downtown Salt Lake have access to the Gallivan Plaza. That was, that was a conscious decision that needed to be made when they developed that and has worked in the past. Next one is parking. It's always a popular topic when talking about planning. So I wanted to address that. We wanted to make sure that parking is, encourage the development of large parking areas that can be shared between multiple users. This allows for smaller parking areas immediately adjacent to specific uses. So as you can see, this actually is a very large parking garage that serves multiple buildings throughout downtown as well as the theater is on top of that. Then here within Sugar House on your right-hand side, this serves a senior living facility, some apartments, and all the uses that are front there on that street. All right. And then for the last one is architectural guidelines. This is where you get into those specific buildings on a site. So the one I wanted to really highlight, there's two here. The first one I wanted to highlight was designed for potential. So this allows for conversion of existing ground floor uses or potential second and third-story uses. On the left here is a ground floor unit that has a height that the ceiling is high enough that it could be converted into a commercial development or an office or something like that with minimal change. It would be, you know, there are certain height requirements that you have to have to have a commercial development. The image on the right, this building was designed that, you know, these parking garages are pretty flat. So The image on the right, this building was designed that, you know, these parking garages are pretty flat. So as parking need decreases, these could be converted to office-based or additional spaces. So we want to encourage that people, when they are building or proposing new development, they look at those things. Last one, fenestration and porosity. This was something that Jared and Melinda wanted me to speak about specifically because those are weird words and urban designers, I'm kind of a classically trained urban designer. And I'm familiar with those words, but most people aren't. So fenestration is the actual windows and being able to see in and outside of a building, being able to see and be seen, as it were. That provides a level of comfort to the pedestrian that you can see inside something and entices you to go into a building. And it also provides a little bit of safety that people can see out and see that you're walking there. So if something were to happen, you know that there's somebody there that would be able to help you. And then porosity is kind of just what you think of it. It's kind of, you know, open openings. So, you know, outdoor dining or providing a mid-block crossing or a shortcut through a development through, you know, large blocks. Salt Lake City is known for their notoriously large blocks. So it's important to really encourage those. So to kind of wrap up, what we're doing is reviewing those design guidelines. I'm happy to answer any questions as it pertains to any specific guideline, anything that you'd like answered, I'm more than happy to do so. We are seeking a recommendation of approval to the City Council to replace, to repeal and replace the existing design guidelines with the new ones. So with that, thank you for attending my TED Talk. So. You are on mute, Mr. Markham. You are still on mute.
I'm not paying attention. It's open for comments, so please, Ned, Travis, Lisa. I know we've had some small discussions and there's a lot of items that you folks really would like some answers to, so the floor is yours.
I'll open it up. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. It's it's good, it's comprehensive. But I don't, I've been on the MCCD Design Review Committee for a good number of years and saw the current guidelines actively helping developers to understand the desires of the of the city to develop in the Murray City Center, in which case I think we've taken a little bit too much away from the existing guidelines that I think has been a benefit to developers coming in and understanding what the real desire in this historic area is.
Are there, are there things that have that you'd like to be put back in, for example, something that I should be looking at a little bit more?
Well, I think a significant number of things. I mean, just the, the current guidelines start off with a process and help the developers understand how to go through a process to get a new development or a new building or an existing building updated. Talks about leads, doesn't mandatory lead requirements. It's a desire, not required. But, you know, you can meet the standards of doing leads. Talks about historic fabric. I mean, it's the historic area of the city. We don't talk about that in the new guidelines at all. I just, all across the board, Zach, I think the previous guidelines are just, they're more descriptive. And as I said, I'll say it once more, really help those trying to do what the city has wanted in the MCCD to do it right. And I think the proposed guidelines don't go that far, which I think is not beneficial to the developers or not as beneficial.
Can I push back a little bit, Ned? Okay, so first off, I agree with the previous guidelines. I liked them. I thought that they gave very, very clear direction as to what the city wanted to see happen there. But my pushback is, we just went through one of the biggest economic periods of economic growth and development in the Salt Lake Valley, and we saw minimal interest in being able to move forward with the project here, which tells me that they were too restrictive. They gave such granular detail of what they wanted that they weren't able to meet all of the, all of the needs of what was requested. I mean, I truly, I appreciate all the work that went into that original set. And every time we made a modification to that original set, it bothered me that we were reducing the burden and reducing the burden, but yet at the end of the day, nothing has come from it. We've got a new fire station, we've got a new city hall that follows these recommendations. We have a proposed office building that maybe will come, maybe won't come. We lost a Utah State Building on this property. It just doesn't seem like it's really brought anything forward, other than historic preservation was really paid attention to. This is, it's a dead center of the massive metropolitan area. I mean, we're a hundred plus miles north to south, and we're in the heart of that. And historic preservation is great, but you can only preserve what's worth being preserved. And we're not having anything right now that people want to come in, retrofit, do anything with. I almost felt like it was a great attempt. It didn't work. So I appreciate that this is more it gives more of an idea of what we'd like to see here without putting the onus on it. And I welcome people to push back on what I have to say on that.
Can I maybe swing to the middle? Sum it up, maybe, back to the middle, maybe? Because I agree with both of you. I agree with the original document. I liked how it gave clarity and direction. But I understand how it was somewhat confusing because it sounded like suggestions and standards at the same point within one document. And so I like how this new document's written. I like the clarity of it. I like the simplicity of it. I like the pictures of it. I like the outline, the organization of it. And I understand what both parties have just said, we're missing too much. And Mr. Nae said we had too much, that was too restrictive. But I'm wondering if we could meet everyone's needs by using the new format, the new organization, the new structure, and maybe within that format, addressing some of the community's desire to maintain some historical relevance and some sustainability with guidelines and not strict standards. Because the one, the previous document did seem like it was strict standards within our guidelines, which was a little bit confusing, I believe. It might lead to some of the lack of interest. So, because I understand like our discussion around the LEE, the Lead Guidelines, I like that. I was I felt like we were shooting for the moon, but I was proud of us for trying. But I now, after many discussions, understand that maybe we could get some of those needs met by not calling out lead, but suggesting we want high standards or we want to look at sustainability. So maybe we could thoughts around that?
Well, I'm going to offer you my opinion, and I'm somewhat skeptical. I am disappointed with the lack of progress and movement on the downtown project. It's, yeah, I couldn't agree more with Travis on that point. Something needs to be done, something needs to be changed. However, be careful what you wish for, staff, because guidelines and recommendations and wishes place an awful lot of pressure on staff to see that the grand vision of what they want to have happen actually happens. If a developer comes in and he's politically well-connected and he's got gobs of money and he wants to push something through on this, well, the guidelines and the vision and all of the nice feel-good things that we want to accomplish, they get shoved by the side. And this places a tremendous amount of pressure on staff to maintain this vision. So it's, it's a lot of, it's just a lot of pressure without specific guidelines, without something to lean on. It's going to be difficult.
And I would, I would mention that to help maybe alleviate a little bit is that there's been a lot of disconnect between what these guidelines are truly supposed to be and what the zoning ordinance mandates. And the zoning ordinance mandates certain things that shall happen. Like, we will get downtown. I'm trying to think of the best wording here, but you still have those same setback requirements, parking requirements, the use requirements, things like that within the zone. But the guidelines help to inform almost aesthetics and the feeling of the downtown. Everything that you want to see downtown was put into the zoning ordinance. So we still have those controls, but we, the guidelines help for the DRC and us and the Planning Commission, when they see a project, they, in for some reason, it doesn't, it's not doing any of those things that are laid out in the guidelines. You can refer back to them and say, well, have you thought of this? Have you addressed it in any way? Because the guidelines do say that they shall be consulted and reviewed, I believe. Okay, Jared's nodding his head, so I'm not saying anything too restrictive. So I, those are still to be consulted, and you can use those as things saying, well, these guidelines say, maybe look at this, and it allows for greater flexibility both from you as staff members as well as the developer as well.
Sure. I just, I see that, you know, what I go back to are perhaps guidelines for environmental things that have happened in our state and in our country. And the guidelines aren't worth the paper they're printed on if there's not requirements. And even if there are requirements, you know, it's litigated to death and so forth. And so I, I just think that there is a place for regulation and there is a place for guidelines. And I just hope that the guidelines can be followed, you know, as they're envisioned.
So I have a question regarding where we've come here. So and to Travis's point, I agree, it'd be nice to see some additional development, particularly in the the huge economic surge we've had in the past years. But is it is it these guidelines that's actually preventing that development? Or is it the stricter zoning ordinance that's actually preventing it? Because I read the guidelines and I'm not seeing any, I'm seeing very little that says you will do this, you will do that. It's all, you know, try to do this, look at this area, think about this. There isn't there isn't a tremendous amount of you will versus ordinance is saying this, just as Zach just mentioned, the ordinance is what is actually requiring items to happen in the area.
So, exactly. So what Zach just said and what Ned just said, it might not, this might be the place, the state we are interested in maintaining some historical relevance. It's not demanding that keep a historical building. It's suggesting there would be nice to have some brick frontage because this is, or industrial feel, because this was originally an industrial area or something of that nature. This might be the place. I don't have, like I said in pre-meeting, I haven't read through all the ordinances, which would have been, which would have added to the conversation, made for more intelligent conversation. So maybe the ordinances, do they demand some of the historical things we need, or do they suggest, or is it left out there too? I don't, I don't know. Don't get me wrong, I don't want us to keep buildings that no one's interested in. Community is interested, it might be a good place to mention that we respect that.
Sure. Can I jump in here for just a moment? Because that's a good, that's a good place for probably for me. So the short answer to your question, Lisa, is kind of, but leaning toward no. The ordinance, if I can give you a recap of the things that changed in the in the MCCD ordinance last year, one of the biggest changes revolved around historic preservation. And while the list of properties that were in the, that were protected, considered significant buildings, and they had all kinds of protections built in for how they could and couldn't be treated, that list was kept, but all of the, but your ability to just simply remove yourself to that list was written into the ordinance. That's how the buildings, that's how a couple of buildings in the MCCD zone have been demolished recently. That was a significant change. So there could be, there could be references to historic preservation in the guidelines. But there are still references to historic preservation in the fabric, the historic fabric, et cetera, in the ordinance itself. But the emphasis to keep those buildings was rewritten as a sort of a small incentive to keep them instead, instead of a prohibition against removing them. So that we are, with the guidelines, Zach and I and the DRC, the DRC that Ned used to serve on, we've been working on these for a while, gone back and forth through a few meetings. And we're shooting at kind of a narrow target. So this is really good input for us to hear that maybe there's, maybe there are other things, or maybe there are more specifics. We kind of, we had a mandate from the elected officials last year when when we rewrote the zoning code, the actual codified portions to modify the design guidelines as well. Not because everything in the design guidelines was bad. As Ned pointed out, there's a lot of just encouraged aspects of the design guidelines. There are some specifics like lead and and there were, it tells you what pavers you can and can't use, and there are some very specific things, and then some very broad things too. So it was, it was kind of a confusing document to work with sometimes, depending on how much you drill down. And we, we sort of elected how far we drilled into the design guidelines as we processed things because of that. But when they rewrote, the rewrite of the MCCD ordinance itself, the design guideline section now reads, it's much smaller, and it simply says, "The Murray City Council has adopted the Murray City Center District Design Guidelines. The guidelines shall be consulted during the review of proposed development in order to provide guidance, direction, and options which will further the stated purposes of the MCCD. Wherever practicable, development should adhere to the objectives and principles contained in the design guidelines." Phil's concerns, coupled with the other things you all have said, are right on the nose. It does. It puts a burden on us as staff to keep pushing people in the right direction as they're making applications. And you're right, these are not design guidelines full of teeth, but they do allow us a point of reference. They let us as a staff, as a city staff, review items, review proposals, and be able to say to the design review committee first, and then later on to you as the Planning Commission, here are the ways in which this proposal has tried to address the things that we've called out as shared values, the things that we've called out as design guidelines. And if they're not doing enough, we'll roll our dice and take our chances and tell them to redraw. And hopefully we do enough of that at the DRC that when it comes to you guys, it looks good and has addressed our concerns. But our window to get these design guidelines right, based on the mandate from the elected officials and and what was written, is pretty narrow. If we put too much in that's required, well, we really can't put anything in that's required. We can't put a standard or requirement in. They've got to remain based on our ordinance. They've got to just remain guidelines because of what we've codified. That's not to say that every design guideline in the world out there doesn't contain standards, or every set of design guidelines doesn't contain some standards and things, because they do. And we may even adopt some as a part of some future small area plan that will contain specific requirements that have to be met. specific requirements that have to be met. But we were already, when this was codified differently than it had been originally, that option was taken away from us. So we've written trying to shoot for that window. I hope that makes some some sense, but Phil, you're right on the nose. It puts a burden on us. So we have to hope that we're up for the task. We can be mean sometimes, we can.
Jared can be really mean.
Are there other?
True, you haven't ever seen me do it, but I can be.
Do we have other commission comments right now? Or if if not, I'll open it up for public comment, just to see if we we receive any public comment on this. And we can come back and we will, we will come back and have additional conversation if if necessary.
Well, I would just say my only comment is, you know, the MCCD is really what even got me involved in Murray City and on the planning commission and was a big part, you know, I had strong feelings about redeveloping that downtown. And I agree with everything that has been said. I think on the one hand, those guidelines maybe did, you know, restrict or turn turn away some development that we wanted to see happen. And the whole time that I've been on the planning commission and hoping to see, you know, every time we talk about the redevelopment of the MCCD, and then it's exactly the same as when I started. So I understand the need to provide some room there. But I do also see how on the other side, time and again, when something, when a developer comes and wants to not have to be held to the MCCD guidelines, they ask to get rezoned and we do it, right? And like, we have pushed and pushed and pushed and farther and farther and farther that my concern with this document in particular is, like you were saying, we're kind of at the will of the developer in the sense that they can come in and say, oh, we're meeting this guideline and this guideline and this guideline in these ways. And there's not really any way to, you know, we can say, hey, what if you consider more walkability or can you make this more connected or, you know, but we don't really have a way to like, I guess my point is there was such a clear vision in the MCCD guidelines of what the MCCD was supposed to be. And it was supposed to be different than every other place in the city. And we've backed off of that so far in the hopes that it gets developed. And I hope that it does, but I also feel like we really are kind of at at the whim of developers to come in and say that they're applying these guidelines in whatever way that they want. And it's hard, it's hard to then enforce those things, you know, other than, you know, can you make more bike paths? You know, that's kind of the feeling I get from it.
Right. Now, yeah, we it's the wouldn't it be cool if syndrome? Wouldn't it be cool if you had more bike paths? And we just keep.
That would be great if you make it more accessible to open space, you know, but they we really are at, there's no way to other than be like, please follow these guidelines.
Yeah, that's a that's a really interesting comment. And I'm gonna, I I'd like to read the the we do have actually, not not that have come in in the last few minutes, but coming up as we as we leading up to the meeting tonight, we've received three or four comments that I told Zach.
So we'll we'll open up the public comment portion now then officially, and then that way I can close it when we need to, Jared.
Right. And I and I will, I'll and I want to come back to your comment, Maren, because I have a I have an idea that might help alleviate that. But I'd like to read these first and see if that generates any other discussion. Is that okay?
Great.
Okay. Okay. The, let's see, let me get the first one up. The first comment, the first comment I have is from Rosaba Dominguez and Matt Parks. And I will just read that quickly. Dear Planning Commission, we live on the east side of Center Street, which is part of the Murray City, Murray City Central District MCCD. After reviewing the minutes from the MCCD board and the new proposed guidelines, I have a few concerns. The guidelines state that it received community input. I would like to know how and when this community input was collected and why our neighborhood or community, including other community businesses and organizations, and why has our neighborhood or community, including other community businesses or organizations, not been able to leave input in these new proposed guidelines? Where is the community buy-in? How can, number two, how can we state in the new guidelines that the city is invested in diversity? I'm sorry, how can we state in the new guidelines that the city is invested in diversity when the mayor is fighting against founding a diversity inclusion board? This could include giving insights into the makeup of businesses in order to diversify within our city limits. My inability to ascertain where and when stakeholder input was gathered is problematic as it indicates a lack of inclusion in your data collection practices. Who wrote the new guidelines? Was a firm consulted? Was a survey sent out to the city and the surrounding neighborhood or to those who live and do business within the MCCD? As far as I know, I have not received one. There is a vast difference in how the new MCCD guidelines have been written and is not a true representation of how educated we are as a city or community. The new guidelines appear vague at best. Vague guidelines benefit those with money and influence and disproportionately hurt preservation practices and marginalized communities. The MCCD community has had its battles when it comes to the historical makeup or vision for the city. Does the historical board know that the list of historical homes will be removed from the MCCD guidelines? How is this information being communicated to all parties? There are many things we would like to see and change within the MCCD, but I believe we as a city and community should have the opportunity to have a voice in what happens within the MCCD. Murray strives to be a community oriented, Murray strives to be community oriented and involved in community feedback, but up until this point, all I have received is a postcard to notify us of this public hearing. Matt Parks and Rosaba Dominguez. And then I did actually just get another email during the open public hearing portion, the comment portion, another note from Rosaba saying, hi again, I wanted to clarify that the city council has not asked for these changes, well, at least the current body. The next comment is from Brent Barnett. It says, Dear Planning Commission, I have been looking at the design guidelines booklet. It is really interesting and is full of good principles, especially the values of the first, starting with authentic, active, inclusive. Those are really, really good. The sad thing from a business economic point of view is that we haven't thought hard about the economic vitality of the downtown, as most people recognize if we had started better, we would get a better result. I'm a business consultant, and it is business and economics that drive the downtown's success. All the experts I have talked to say that downtown Murray is a fantastic place to create an intensive commercial district with shops and restaurants, but they have serious reservations about the city hall. The city hall is a nice design. The design is not the problem. The problem is that city halls do not drive economic activity. Nobody comes downtown on evenings and weekends to hang out at the city hall, so it is a dead space. It is a squandered scarce resource. That space could produce so much activity because we have only a few compact compact blocks. We need more space and the city hall, as nice as it is, has been put in a spot that will harm the downtown's success. Anyone who thinks about economic vitality can see that by taking such a huge chunk of our limited space in the downtown for the city hall, we severely limit the economic potential and our ultimate energy of the downtown. Downtown needs what might be called critical mass to create a vibrant district. Our fashion place mall is a good example. If you divide it by half or down to one-fourth, it doesn't have the critical mass. That should still be our concern. We also need a good design firm that can create a real plaza right integrated with the shops. There is no such, there is so much potential. Someone who has done plazas before, the guy that Mill Creek has is particularly good. We need that input from people who have experience in the actual design of an active plaza. Secondly, we need a firm who knows how to bring in a lot of interesting shops and restaurants. Mill Creek has some great people who are helping them put together their downtown, and I'd like Holidays Community Director Paul Allred as well. Paul would be delighted to give us an outsider's perspective if we take advantage of it. Thanks to our planners for all the great work on the booklet. Thanks to you, the planning commission, for all the great work you do. Brent Barnett. And let me get to the next one here. And Brent, I just have to tell you that Paul was the guy who gave me my first internship in planning. He's like my favorite person on the planet. The next comment is from Janice Strobel. Thanks to the city staff for their work on improving the MCCD design guidelines to complement the changes made to the downtown ordinance last year. Tonight, I ask that the planning commission deny approval of the proposed MCCD design guidelines because, number one, the proposed guidelines are too are far too broad for new development and misproviding guidelines for the bulk of the MCCD existing structures. More review and input is needed to provide, sorry, more more review and input is needed to provide a better document incorporating guidelines for improvement to existing buildings along with new development. The proposed guidelines do not provide a clear vision for all of downtown, and thus the design guidelines are incomplete. Where there is no vision, quote, where there is no vision, there is no hope, close quote, George Washington Carver. Planning Commission, your service is valuable for the future of our city. Thank you for your thorough evaluation of these downtown design guidelines. And I ask that the proposed guidelines be returned to the staff with the recommendation to develop a more comprehensive design guideline and vision for all of downtown. Janice Strobel, resident neighboring downtown Murray. And the next email is from David Ammet. It says, Dear Planning Committee, Dear Murray Planning Commission, it is delightful to read the newspapers of yesteryear and see Murray through new or old eyes. For over a century, thousands of articles in the Murray Eagle and other local publications document the hallmarks of a strong and thriving town, e.g., Murray's once-strong local identity, unique culture and traditions, arresting landmarks, built environment, et cetera. Sadly, over the latter half of the 20th century, urban sprawl subsumed much of Murray and gradually remade swaths of the city into another Salt Lake Valley suburb. Up until the present, however, Murray still had a traditional downtown which distinguished the city from every community around it. It has been sad to watch Murray's leadership flail around over the past few years in their efforts to pin down a community identity and corresponding development vision. Leadership in Brigham City, Helper, Price, Provo, or other Utah cities have worked together to polish their communities' built environments and promote their multi-layered physical, cultural, historical, and social identities. Murray's leadership, in contrast, has chosen to view their own civic architectural history as a barrier to progress rather than what is so easily what's what it so easily could become, a stepping stone towards present and future success. So many of Murray's proposed design guidelines, which aim to create, quote, a truly authentic downtown, close quote, will merely make Murray look even more like the other cities in the southern end of the Salt Lake Valley. I urge you to reject these proposed downtown design guidelines before you tonight. If you choose to approve them, we wish Murray good luck, as this luck will sorely be needed. Sincerely, David Ammet, Ph.D. And those, I believe, are all of the comments that I have.
Okay. Well, with that, I will close the public comment period and bring it back up to the the commission for additional comments and and discussion. You know, Jared, I I would just like to say, first of all, well, do you, as as a matter of of just policy, are those passed on to the city council or, yeah, I mean, I would really, to me, a lot of those were more directed at the council. In fact, there was a council person that, you know, had had the first comment, Ms. Dominguez. But I I would, I think, you know, they were directed at us tonight, but they have much more bearing on on city council direction than that. And you folks are just responding to their direction, and I'd like that noted.
Yeah, they are, they are passed on to the city council if we take this forward. If we take this forward to the city council or when we take this forward to the city council, they will go with it. Absolutely.
Great. All right. Just discussion, folks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I I had six little bullets coming into this topic, and I have one or two that we I haven't touched on yet.
Go for it.
So one, it would be, I think it might be nice if we had a map of Murray City District in this guidelines for visual reference to what we're discussing. I think there was one in the previous one. That might be nice. Another, then the other two questions I had about process, the former guidelines discuss process, I'm assuming is no longer in this guidelines because it's somewhere else that's more appropriate. Is that true? Or are we just?
It's in the code.
Yes, it's in the zoning ordinance. The process is spelled out there.
I think that's all I have. Oh, and I wanted to say I appreciate the discussion. Thanks, everyone.
Anyone else?
Can I come back to, if if no one else is going right now, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
I wanted to come back to to Maren's comment from from before, because it's an interesting point. I think it 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 bears, it kind of reflects everybody's thoughts, really, so far tonight. And so I'll start by saying, we are not, as a staff, in a huge hurry to get this done. If if you feel like we need to take more time and add things to it, we can do that, but we we're going to need some more, some more, this is our best shot at it so far, trying to balance what the council that was in place at the time that the code was rewritten directed us to do and what we felt like would still accomplish the the right kinds of things for the vision of the downtown and then get them done. But specifically, Maren mentioned how it it may not get done what we need to do. Maybe one thing that we could do and that we didn't do yet would be to take the guidelines as we've written them, at the very least, and compare them to the things in the code that are requirements in the code that these guidelines sort of couple with and support more. That might help you feel or at least understand better what we're what we're going for with that. Zach, does that make sense?
Mr. Hall, I really, really appreciate that gesture and that idea because I feel like it would help at least me feel like acknowledge where the gaps are, that we covered all topics that are necessary, nothing's been missed. Because at this point, I'm assuming things that were missed were because they're addressed somewhere else.
Right. And then we we talked about that earlier and we didn't, and not all of them transferred from the old design guidelines into the code. Some of them did. And maybe it would be good for us to to provide you guys that kind of a comparison. It might make you feel better. And we could do that regardless of whether we add any additional guidelines to this or not. We could provide that kind of a comparison to you before we, so we can bring this back to you, what I guess is what I'm saying.
That would present, that that would give me a much greater level of comfort, Jared. Yes.
Yeah. So anyway, I wanted to throw that out there, and it's what I was thinking while Maren was saying what she was saying, and I didn't want to forget. And I almost forgot, but I did remember in the end. I I do think that might help. I wish we'd have, I candidly, I wish we'd have thought of that earlier, but we've been putting out fires for a month and a half here and the way it goes. But that would probably be a good review. And if there are things that maybe that will expose to us in doing that, things that we want to address more in more detail in the guidelines, again, noting that we're never going to be able to require standards in these particular guidelines because the code doesn't really let us do that, it doesn't direct us to do that. So they'll remain guidelines. So all those things that we were worried about before that Phil mentioned, the burden, the putting a lot of onus on staff to make this still work and and those things, that that's still going to be there no matter what. But we could maybe be more detailed about it if we need to. That analysis might help us with that.
The analysis will confirm the difficulty of your job.
Can you address the the one item that was brought up about public notice and public participation, Jared?
Yeah, and and I'll let Zach jump in here too, because he he looked, he's the, Zach has been the driving force behind these guidelines, and he looked at all the old plans. He's nerdy that way and likes to look at old plans and read old surveys, et cetera. But this is, I guess what I would say to that is that this is the, this is the main thrust of that public process. We did not retain a consultant for this. And and I'll be, we didn't retain a consultant for it. We didn't run a survey particular to this set of guidelines. We used survey material that we had from 2015, 2016, and the general plan, and we used references from older plans and other plans that have been done. And these same themes keep cropping up. And when you look at those, for example, just the shared values, they directly reflect those five key initiatives that we adopted in 2017 in the general plan. These are, these are what the majority of Murray citizens feel like ought to happen in the downtown. So we're confident in that, but we we didn't receive any directive to sort of send this out to consultants or bring anybody on to do it. And I will candidly say, I don't think that we needed to, given the scope of what the guidelines needed to do and the fact that we had rewritten the the ordinance that they were going to be based on. Zach is is a more than competent urban designer, and we felt like we had the, we had the skill set to to get this done. And I think the document bears that out. These are good best practices. We can do more with it in analysis for you all. But no, we didn't send it out for surveys directly, and we didn't hire a consultant for it.
But Mr. Hall, that was partially due for all the things you said, but also because survey and consultants has a cur on this topic, we're just cleaning it out, correct?
It it would have been, it would have been nice to do it, but it would have been money that we didn't need to spend. We, oh, and I didn't say, you know, I said I was going to have Zach talk about this, and then I just won't shut my mouth, because that's.
That's okay. You're you're explaining it much better than I would.
I doubt that, very much. But we also, it's important to remember, Ned mentioned the design review committee that he sat on before, the DRC, and you're all familiar with them. And the DRC that we have is full of folks like Ned. We've been working on this with them. So we have planners and architects on that committee. So even where where Zach and I might fall short, they're inputting those kinds of concepts and and. those kinds of concepts and refining that as well. And we didn't get through them in a single meeting. We went through one concept
Four.
Okay. A couple of concepts and two formal extensions. So they, they took us to task on some things that we were leaving out, things that we wanted to do better. They were a good group. Including the, including a lawyer on that group now too. So we've diversified our expertise on the DRC a little bit, but they're a good group. We still miss Ned there, but you know, we're using him in another capacity now. So, but yeah, there, there's been that kind of peer review nature of it too.
Other, other discussion? Please, Melinda.
Yeah, I just want to add that the citizens who are on the MCCD design review committee all reside in Murray, have a variety of expertise and, and that is part of the public participation process too is that it's been vetted through that group. And then I want to echo what Jared said, that the public process, this is why we're here tonight. We milled out how many public notices, every property owner
Three hundred and somewhat.
We, we, yeah. So, so that is exactly why we're here this evening. This is part of the public process, seeking input. And all of you as planning commissioners are residents of Murray and value your opinion as well. And so, you know, that's, a, a public process doesn't always have to take place prior to forming a document. That's why we're here tonight.
Good point. Thank you. More, more comments or, or discussion? Okay, well, go ahead.
All I would say is that I really do like and agree with a lot of the things that are in the new guidelines. And I think that our collective goal, of all of us, all want the redevelopment of downtown. And so the steps that we take to get there, you know, I just, I think that Jared, like you said, maybe having some of those comparisons of, yeah, just the, the guidelines to the expectations that we want and how we can enforce those things, I guess, you know, maybe it would be helpful. But, you know, I think ultimately if this gets us closer to having the downtown Murray that we all want, you know, I think that hopefully that's the, the step in the right direction, you know. So.
Great. So Jared, just a procedural question for you. If, if we wanted to continue this, this item to allow for that comparison to be presented to us, what, does that require a motion or?
You know what? Continuing the hearing to like the next public meeting, November 5th?
It should be a date specific then.
Date specific. And, and I don't think it would take us a long time to, to write up a comparison of the guidelines and how they support the strictures of the code that we have. So I, I, Zach, you, so I'm promising lots of things that Zach will write. So let me
Yes.
So is that, is November 5th something that we could reasonably expect to produce that kind of comparison?
I'm, knowing the projects down that have come forward.
Yeah.
I, I question whether it could be done on the 5th or maybe the next?
Fifteenth.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
No, it should be the 19th then, wouldn't it?
Sorry, yep, 19th.
That, that's my only concern is knowing what the 5th might already be looking like.
Yeah.
We may have civil war on the 5th anyway, so.
Oh, that's true. It all might be for nothing. We might have descended into Armageddon by then.
Very true.
One can always hope. I personally
So I mean, I do have a question though, Jared, is, I believe they can continue the item without a date. We would just have to renotice, is that correct?
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I would say we would either pick the 5th or the 19th and, and go for it. I don't want to try to leave it open and renotice. I'd rather let people that are participating know when it's happening again. Just, I, I'm more comfortable with the date certain legally.
I, I prefer the, the 19th. There's obviously some, some trepidation on Zach's part there and I don't want to, you know, I don't want to push him. This is important.
Sure. Sure. Well, that's, I'm fine with the 19th as well. Like I said, we've been working on this for a long time. We are not in a rush to, we don't want to trip rushing at the end. We're, we're welcome, or we would welcome the opportunity to do that kind of an analysis.
Okay. All right.
All right, there. Sorry, I just want to add, is there any additional, since, since this is sounding like where it's going to head, are there additional things that you'd like us to look at? As, as it pertains to the guidelines? Is there something glaringly missing there that you'd want to see as well on top of that kind of?
Not for me. I, I just want reassurance.
Ned, you talked about historic fabric earlier. Is that something?
There's three things. I feel, I feel like there's been three large topics throughout is sustainability, historical content, and maybe that map. Was there anything else I missed to summarize our conversation? Anyone else?
I think that's
I think a little more meat on the bones. I mean, I, like I said before, sounded like a broken record, but I think for a developer to look at the guidelines versus go through the zoning ordinance is probably a little easier. Even though it's not ordinance, it's giving them guidance and you still have to go look at the ordinance. But I think more meat in guidelines is better than less.
Okay. We'll, we'll try to look at where we could, where, where would make sense to sort of beef up some of the, some of the language, et cetera.
I know, I know the third thing I forgot, process. The first guidelines go into detail of the process and there was quite, I asked, where is that process stated otherwise?
Yeah. Okay. And we'll, we'll look at if there, if it would make sense to, if it's all right, we would look at if it would make sense to add process to the guidelines. It, it is stated in the code like Zach said, but we'll take a look and see if it would make sense to add a little something with the mapping maybe.
All right. Sorry to do this to you, Zach.
Nope, you're good. This is good.
Just a little more fleshed out is all, I think.
This is good info to have.
Definitely.
And cancel that Thanksgiving vacation you had.
Hey, I never, I never, mm-mm, not going nowhere.
I don't know if we have things to be thankful for yet.
All right. Well, I, I would, I would like to entertain a motion then unless there is more discussion.
Now, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to make a motion if you'd like.
Please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the Murray City Center District Design Guideline to November 19th to 2020 meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I could second that.
All right. Lisa is a second, seconding machine tonight. So I have a motion by Sue Wilson and a second by Lisa Malkovich that the planning commission, and I'm looking for the right language here. Oh, I can't find it. That we continue the MCCD guideline revisions to the November 19th meeting. How's that?
Sounds great.
All right. Please call for a vote.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
And Chairman Markham?
Yes. Thank you. That concludes our agenda. Are there additional items that staff needs to bring up this evening?
No, I think we're
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I've got a couple of questions real quick.
Sure.
We're losing RC Willie in January. And if that property is going to be listed for sale, is that right?
That's what we've heard.
And then the ShopCo property may also be coming for redevelopment?
The Lillenquist's have, that, that own the ShopCo property have reached out, yes, um, through a real estate developer or through a real estate agent as well. So we have heard about both those properties, but there's nothing concrete on, on either yet.
Okay. Are there any others?
About
Probably not that you can talk about, right?
Really talk about. There's, there's interest in almost anything that is a big box and has any kind of access to any major road.
Yeah. I mean, we get, we get calls on things all the time from people just wondering what the zoning is and what the potential is and, but we don't have any
Up against?
No, we don't have any discussions or anything, so.
Okay. I keep my fingers crossed that we could get a Hobby Lobby in that ShopCo. It'd save me so much gas.
Do we have any new news on the Kmart site? Is it?
Oh, that's a great, that's a great question. So, Melinda, just, we just, how, how many weeks, was it two weeks ago that the MO, that the memorandum got finished, do you think?
Yeah, the MOU has been fully executed and is recorded now against the property. So they've been working on getting a demolition permit for the, the Kmart. They don't have a demolition permit, but they, they've been working on obtaining, I mean, it takes quite a, quite a bit of time to obtain all the documents and everything that you need to get in place to get a permit issued. So they've been working on that. One other update there and specifically related to the MCCD zone. We did have the RFP for the RDA-owned property at 48th and State that we put out earlier this year. That closed in July. We have the committee, the internal committee and two of the RDA board members have selected a firm. And at the November 17th RDA meeting, that firm will be presenting their concept to the RDA board. And our hopes are that at that time, we will be able to enter into an exclusive, negotiation agreement with them. It's, it's Edlin, Gertie Edlin. And, and that would just basically give us kind of just a commitment letter to each other that we won't go out and market the property for a period of probably a year so that gives us time to, to completely develop the concepts for the site and any participation with a, to funding if that were to be something that were to happen and get a sales agreement put in place and all of that stuff. So, um, so our hopes are that actually in the next year, we'll have some projects coming through the MCCD committee and then to the planning commission using the new guidelines. But that's, for those of you who have an interest in the downtown area, you'd want to maybe mark your calendars for the November 17th meeting. And I don't know at this point what time that meeting would be, but I would plan around probably three, between three and four is when it would start and it'll just be a Zoom meeting as well, so you can just stream it. But that's going to keep us pretty busy over the next year and hopefully we'll actually be able to get some progress made in the downtown area. On another note, we have issued the building permit for the city hall that was issued yesterday. And we also have been able to close on the bonds for the city hall property. The last step that was in place, or the last barrier that was in, we were waiting for, for that possibility to happen